Alrighty, 7:01 PM. If we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we'll call this meeting in order at 7:01 PM. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Von Kruks.
Here.
Benedetti.
Here.
Kiabawatin.
Present.
Hornbeck, here. Peruzzi.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Rezepa.
Here.
Corum, present. Mayor Rezepa.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First item we have here is the minute approval of the May 12th, 2025 regular meeting, moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Alright, we've got two presentations tonight, and so the first one, if we could bring Chief Anderson, Deputy Chief Martiniac down here, and also get a motion to make this part of the regular meeting here for our Fire Department's Cardiac Arrest Life Saving Awards. So unanimously so ordered, so.
Good evening. Tonight, we proudly recognize eight Trenton firefighter paramedics for their exceptional care in life-saving care. These individuals are being honored as a group for their involvement with two separate cardiac arrest calls in early 2025 that resulted in full recoveries. That is, the patients were discharged from the hospital with no neurological deficits. To put this in perspective, in Michigan in 2024, there was about a 7% chance of that happening. Yet, in 2025, the first two months, these firefighters responded to two different calls in which the rapid response, advanced training, and clinical expertise directly contribute to positive life-sustaining outcomes. These successes are testament to the power of teamwork. From our newly enhanced dispatch center to the readiness and coordination of our on-duty firefighter paramedics, every component of the emergency response system played a vital role. Their professionalism, clinical scare, clinical skill, and commitment displayed during these critical incidents exemplify the highest standards of care. Their efforts not only saved lives, but serve as a powerful reminder of the vital role that they play in our community. At this time, we are honored to present these awards to these outstanding individuals in recognition of their extraordinary care. We'll bring them down as a group. So first, we have Jacob Robbins. Josh Hodge. Jacob Ficken. Colt Whitehead is one of the firefighters that just left on the call. Then we have Chris Green. We also have Josh Roberts. He was unable to make it tonight. Then we have Jeff Glowacki. And Mark Gray.
You need me to? I was walking down the line. Thank you. Gentlemen, great job. Thank you.
The post-game handshake line now.
Thank you very much for your service.
Good job, man. Good to see you.
Hey.
Good job as usual.
Appreciate it.
Great job. Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it.
Great job, everybody.
Thanks a ton, man. Appreciate it. Thank you. We appreciate it. Appreciate it.
Mm-hmm. They all are.
Thank you all again. So thank you all again for coming. It's always great to see all the support from the rest of the guys that they get to, so. And no need to stay. Don't worry. Okay, so we'll go on next to our presentation here. If we can make this, get a motion to make it a part of the regular minutes, moved and supported here. So we are going to start with the introductions for the Trenton High School, class of 2025, top 10 students, and who I can comfortably say are probably the 10 smartest people in this room, so. So I'm gonna call everyone out here in order, and then we get to do the, I guess I refer to it as like the graduation party speech, which is like the same series of questions that you get asked by absolutely everyone for the next several months. So if you want to just introduce yourself, talk about where you're going to school, what you plan on studying, and then certainly introduce your family or any loved ones that you might have that are here too, because I think, as we all know, it's very much a team effort. So going in order here, and also for anyone too, please do not hesitate to correct me on your name too. You have earned this honor here. Want to make sure that we get it right. So first up, we have Joshua Hadad with a 4.53 GPA. Congratulations, Joshua. Absolutely. I'll give you this microphone here.
I'm Josh Hadad. I'm going to the University of Michigan for mechanical engineering, and my dad and mom are here. My dad, Chris, and mom, Janet.
We'll have you hang out here, because I know all the council's gonna want to shake your hands too, so.
Yeah.
Next up, second in the class, Kaia Holman, 4.491 GPA. Congratulations, Kaia.
Thank you.
Of course. So I'll give you this here first.
Okay, I'm Kaia Holman. I'm attending the University of Wisconsin-Madison, and I'm double majoring in political science and Spanish, and I've got my Aunt Bethan here, my Aunt Michelle, Uncle Jim, my mom, my sister Ava, and my grandma, so yeah.
Alright, next up, we have Syaev Humadon with a 4.436 GPA. There you are. Hand this over to you.
Alright, so I'm safe, and I'm going to Wayne State for physical therapy, and I have my mom here with me.
Next up, we have... There we go. Alright, next up, we have Marissa Chewie with a 4.43 GPA. There you are.
Hello, I'm Marissa Chewie, and I'm attending the University of Michigan for environmental science with a focus in conservation biology, and my mom and dad are here.
Alright, next we have Scout Higgins with a 4.382 GPA.
Hey, hello. My name is Scout Higgins. I will be attending Michigan Technological University for biomedical engineering, and I'm here with my mom and my dad.
Next up, we have Rocco Walburn with a, also with a 4.376 GPA.
My name is Rocco Walburn. I'm attending the University of Michigan for mechanical engineering, and I'm here with my dad, mom, and stepdad.
Alright, this time, we've got Annabelle Carrillo, 4.376 GPA.
I'm Annabelle Carrillo. I'm attending the University of Michigan for biology on the pre-med track, and my mom and my dad are here with me.
Alright, we've got Owen Hassett with a 4.358 GPA. So I don't see Owen here, so I am going to take personal liberty and include myself in that 10 smartest people in the room that I mentioned earlier. Alright, next up, we have Brooklyn Taylor with a 4.352 GPA.
Hello, my name's Brooklyn Taylor. I'm going to Michigan State University studying chemical engineering, and I'm here with my mom and dad.
And last, but certainly, certainly not least, Ethan Fritz with a 4.339 GPA.
My name's Ethan. I'll be attending the University of Michigan for biomedical engineering, and it's all thanks to my parents and grandparents in the third row.
Alright, so I'm gonna ask one last round of applause for all these very, very intelligent people, but also round of applause for all their loved ones that are here too, because, yeah. Everyone knows it takes a village, so you guys have earned this moment too. So I know all of council wants to shake your hands if you want to do the post-game handshake line here as well too. Lot of en-
Yeah, great job. Real proud of you guys. So proud. I love you. My best friend was Kyle.
Love that. Love that.
Yeah. Great job, you guys. So proud of you. Love to hear. I graduated from Trenton High too, only I never got that line. Don't go on it. Pretty and smart, you guys. Jeez. Love it. Love you guys. Thanks.
Research presentation is phenomenal.
It's awesome. Awesome, awesome. It's great.
Alrighty, and no, do not feel any obligation to stay. We are keeping attendance, so.
And they're gone.
Bye, everyone.
As they're running to the noise.
Go celebrate yourselves.
Enjoy the rest of the summer.
Alrighty. Alright, take care, Mr. Dyeroff.
Oh, meet him off. Mr. Dyeroff.
Alrighty, good segue here. Now, we will go into public comment regarding items on today's agenda. This portion of public comment will have set aside just for items that are on the agenda today. I'm gonna have another opportunity for all other public comment at the close of the meeting. I'd ask that anyone wishing to speak, please begin with their name and address, directs all questions through me, and please limit their comments to five minutes. Not seeing any for this round. We'll move on along here as well. Next, we've got the 33rd District Court fines, costs, and fees for April of 2025. Councilman Benedetti, if you'd like to take this one as a court delegate.
Thank you, Mayor. Moved, received, and placed on file the fines, costs, fees for April 2025 submitted by the 33rd District Court, showing the city of Trenton receiving $12,674.69.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you. First department head we have from our city controller, Ms. Cooper, updated investment policy, new fund balance, debt management, and capital asset policies.
Good evening, everyone. So part of our bond process for our Rotary Park and Fire Police and Municipal Bonds included receiving a rating from the S&amp;P on the city's financial stability. So while we were given a stable rating, the report made mention of our relatively average financial management practices and policies, and a lack of other policies. The city tends to follow state restrictions and recommendations from GASB. However, we do not have a formal fund balance, debt management, or capital asset policy. Our bond advisors, Benzincky and Company, provided sample policies for me to tailor our needs to. So while the city does currently have an investment policy, it was suggested to me that a few edits should be made. The most noticeable changes are to the diversification of our investments, which increased from 25% to 50% for certain security types, and changing the maximum maturity of our bonds from three years to five years. All four policies have been reviewed by our city attorney, so I'm looking for a motion to adopt the city's fund balance, debt management, and capital asset policies, and adopt an updated investment policy.
Moved. Smart.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Councilman Rodriguez.
I just have a quick question. I actually read the S&amp;P report.
Okay.
And so basically, we're doing very well. We're definitely in the top four, rated as AA-.
Correct.
So with these changes, are they actually going to help us in the future? Will we be able to go up the next step? I mean, being in the top four is still pretty good.
Right, it is. But I still just didn't like the fact that they pointed out certain things that we didn't have. So if it helps, then, I mean, for any future bonds, it won't help for our new bond, the 43.5 million, but if we do any future bonds, then it could potentially help get us up a notch.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, it's unanimously sorted.
Alright, thank you.
Next up, our DPS Director, Mr. Sargent. We've got a request to purchase a sewer push camera.
Thank you, Mayor. The DPW Water and Sewer Crew utilize a portable push camera system when inspecting sewer lines six inches or smaller. Our current camera, which is 11 years old, suffered a failure which would require a $4,000 repair. Due to its age and wear, we don't feel it'd be cost-effective to repair. Multiple quotes were sought, with Jack Duhaney Company providing the lowest cost. Therefore, I'm requesting authorization to purchase this sewer push camera from Jack Duhaney Company in the amount of $10,590. Funds are available in the sewer maintenance account.
So moved. Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Councilman Cabell.
Just a quick question, Kevin. Is this for more of an interior use, or are you using it, like, when you go down? I mean, you're really not hitting anything off of six inches into a manhole or anything, are you?
It just depends. I mean, there's certain times we have to get into a six-inch sewer outside, and this is our only option.
That's, that's your option.
Yeah, our mainline camera's too big.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Alright.
Anyone else? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered.
Thank you.
Kevin? Alright, and from Chief Anderson from the Fire Department, we have EMS billing rate changes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you tonight, I have proposed some adjustments to our EMS billing rates. We have not done any changes in the last five years, and it's about that time. The federal government does make interme- interme- inter- oh, man. Incremental annual adjustments to Medicare reimbursements, which basically drives all other insurance carriers and what they are willing to pay. In discussions and consultation with our billing contractor, the rates that I've proposed before you are well within the industry standards for the area, and these rates are meant to reflect both the high-quality care we provide and the substantial costs associated with the advanced equipment required to service, for the service that we provide. So I request approval of the rates as proposed.
How does some move?
Support.
Move and supported. Any further discussion? And just to make note to Chief, rhetorical in a way, but this will not impact the residents, correct?
Correct.
Great. Just for folks watching at home, just to make sure of that. Any further discussions? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Great. Madam Clerk, do we have any late items?
No, we do not.
Alright. Go to our disbursements and statements, then our reports, and I'll defer to our mayor pro tem, Councilman Benedetti.
Thank you again, Mayor. Moved to approve the authorized disbursements, May 19th, 2025, in the amount of $864,873.42.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
Received and placed on file the two following board minute reports, library governing board minutes, January 9th, 2025, and the police department monthly report, April 2025.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Councilman.
I have one more item, Mayor. Make the motion to hold a closed study session of the council immediately following the budget study. No, we don't have a budget study session tonight. It got canceled, right? So immediately following the council meeting tonight, discuss the purchase and sale of property.
Support.
Moved and supported. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Benedetti?
Yes.
Kiabawatin?
Yes.
Hornbeck?
Yes.
Peruzzi?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rezepa?
Yes.
Von Kruks?
Yes.
Washington Currys, Mayor Rezepa.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you, Councilman. Alright.
You're welcome, Mayor.
Okay, we'll go to other council business now. Two things on my end. I just did, I know, I mentioned it last meeting, but want to remind folks again that this Saturday, we'll be having the Memorial Day Parade at 10:00 AM, and so very excited for that. Always good. But the exciting announcement that we have is, and we'll have press release and social media info out about it tomorrow, but getting rewarded everyone watching tonight for paying attention. So we've talked a lot about the progress we've made since passing the bond, which is, was nine months ago now, actually, which was weird to say out loud that it has been this, that long. But since then, we've been working on the land acquisition piece of things very, very diligently, and fortunately, we now have a location for the new fire station. We have acquired two parcels of property in the West Road and Veterans Parkway corridor, the Trenton Motor Inn and the Trenton VFW, where we are fortunately on schedule, and knock on wood, with, I've entered purchase agreements for both of these, with the VFW voting last week to approve the sale to us. We're very excited about the opportunities here, that this was also still under budget too. Knock on wood, I can say this too, especially now that the purchase agreement is signed, so no one can come back and ask for more. But this was, you know, we, since, we talked about this for well over a year, leading up to the bond vote, about how important it was to have the fire station in this general location, how it's going to improve response times for our residents in every part of the city, and it's really going to be an opportunity for us to build something great in that location, and make it, make it look really, really nice, and give the people that deserve it the most a great place to work. With that too, we'll have some more information too about the police station enhancements that are gonna be going along, staying in that Third and Maple area as well. So we're really excited about this. Certainly more information to come, but do want to let everyone know that that property has been secured for us here, and we're taking that next step now with the bond, bond funds there. So very exciting. I want to give a thank you certainly to Dean, to Chief Anderson, Chief Hawkins, amongst so many others too that have worked as a part of this, but we were really making a big positive step with this today, and really excited for the opportunities that we're gonna continue to have with it going forward, so. Probably forgetting a couple of things that I wanted to mention as part of that, but have plenty more opportunities to talk about it soon. So that's all I've got today, but yeah, keep an eye out for more work to come as we hope to make that a real gem there. So that was all I've got tonight. We'll go to Councilwoman Von Kruks first.
I have nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Alright, Councilman Benedetti?
Uh, nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hornbeck?
I just want to congratulate our top 10 again. That was, they're outstanding kids. I have the privilege of working at the high school, so I get to see them every day, and they're phenomenal kids, and all have very, very big goals, and I'm sure they will all accomplish them. And also, thank you to our firefighters and paramedics who were able to earn those awards. That is amazing, and now we get to announce a new home for them. So hopefully, they will enjoy it. I, we've had a few sneaks, and it's gonna be pretty great. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Peruzzi?
Nothing, sir.
Alright, Councilman Cabell.
Good after, good evening, Mayor. Thank you. You know, likewise, congratulations to the class of 20, all the class of 2025 for your accomplishments, for your hard work, and for completing one chapter of many in your lifetime. So best of luck to all of you, and best of wishes in your next journeys, wherever that may take you. To the Trenton Fire Department, thank you and congratulations for all you do, especially those that were recognized tonight for your lifesaving efforts. You are part of the fabric that makes this community and keeps us safe, and that's why people move here, is because of the services we provide. So, and to Mayor and administration, thank you for, for all you've done on this. It's been a bit, large lift on this, the new building of the fire station and police station. So, you know, it's fun to get shovels in the ground, and we're getting close there, so I'm excited about that. And speaking about shovels in the ground, last but not least, Kevin, congratulations to your crew. Many of you may or may not know, this week is National Public Works Awareness Week, and so this is the week where we acknowledge our, our folks in public sec-, or in public services for all they do. They, they, they fill a very important role in the community and in all the communities, being one of those in that field as well. It's a very important week to me to recognize those folks that spend their day out on the road, making sure our roads and infrastructure are safe and sound for all of us that use it. So thank you very much, Mayor. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say congratulations to all the high school students in the class of 2025. How exciting, and they all seem to have such huge goals, and I'm sure they'll do fine. And congratulations to our firefighters and paramedics. What a wonderful award and a great achievement for our city too. I would like to request that we add the Memorial Day Parade to our calendar, if that's possible, to the city's calendar on the website.
Yeah.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alright, Madam Clerk, do you have anything?
I'll just mention that City Hall will be closed on Monday, May 26th, for Memorial Day, and our next regular council meeting will be on Monday, June 2nd, at 7:00 PM.
Thank you. Madam Assessor, you have anything?
All set.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Treasurer?
Steven, get the clock on.
Yeah, it's not like I was surprised here. Anyways, just a couple things. Number one, I just left about 15 minutes before I got here, and, and, and you know, Timber went over to visit former Councilman and Mayor pro tem, Bill LaFever, and he says to say hi to all y'all, so I'm saying hi to all y'all.
Hey, Bill.
Hey, Bill. Okay, and I'm sure he's, I'm not sure he's watching. I don't know. I can't lie.
That's not bad.
I hope not.
Anyways, it was great to see you in action, Mayor, giving out those and presenting those top 10 students Wednesday. The TEF, Trenton Education Foundation, has an opportunity to present 27 scholarships, and, and, and that will, and many, many of those, I'm writing their names down. I want to see how many are there, but many of those folks that you saw tonight will be there. But you did an excellent job, so I got some, some big shoes to fill. So anyways, just wanted to let you know. It's a wonderful community we live in.
Yep. Very lucky. Yep. Thank you, Mike. Okay, any of our department heads have anything? First up, Donna from the library.
Hi, I'm from the library. Your public-
Hi, I'm from the library, your public library, and just wanted to remind everyone that summer reading is coming. That's why I'm wearing my summer shirt. And registration will actually start early this year. We're starting on June 2nd, and it's going through August 2nd. It's for all ages. And just some highlights, that we're gonna be having some pretty exciting programs this year. We're gonna be having, making kaleidoscopes, we're making cotton candy, and learning how to create those scientific things to make cotton candy. We're having end-of-year party. We're having a messy art day. We're having music, tie dye, all sorts of things. And that's just for the kids. For the adults, we have even more programs going on, and of course, there's prizes and all sorts of things that the children can get and the adults for reading. And we have extra summer reading raffle baskets that the kids can all earn tickets for, so that we can keep the kids reading over the summer and not worry about them losing any of the great things that they've learned during the school year. So that's all I wanted to let people know, and just check out our website for registering for the events and for getting your summer reading started. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Donna. Appreciate it. Any other department heads have anything? All right, we'll go to public comment now. Anyone wishing to speak? We ask that you begin with your name and address, direct all questions through me, and please limit your comments to five minutes. Let's see. All right, seeing none, we'll have to take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved and supported for adjournment at 7:30 PM. See you all in two weeks, and we'll start our closed session here right away, too.